Call the city council meeting in order, roll call please.
Alderman Kedala?
Here.
Alderman Knite?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Lewatan? Alderman Police?
Here.
Alderman Shaki? Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Corrin being present, will you stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 3, 2008?
Go.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Council without objection, I'm going to take a couple things out of order and move to Mayor's report. Dolores and Carol, would you join me at the podium? Normally, it is our pleasure when somebody has served the city of Wood Dale, particularly somebody who has been the longest-serving person on any committee in the history of the city of Wood Dale, that we like to recognize them and give them a plaque and thank them for their service to our community. We weren't able to do that in Burt Crusiani's case because of his sudden death. So, we've asked the family to come and we would like to give them this resolution extending the city's gratitude for Burt Crusiani's service. Whereas the city of Wood Dale values the service of its many volunteers serving on boards and commissions, and whereas Umbert Crusiani served as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals Plan Commission for 35 years from 1972 to 2007, and whereas Umbert Crusiani provided his expertise and knowledge assisting fellow commission members with many decisions on major developments, including Orchard Lakes, Woodside subdivision, Ethan Woods, Wood Dale Station, Bristol Park, Arbor Woods, Mount Pine North and South, and actually if we included the entire list, we'd probably run out of room on the plaque. Whereas Umbert Crusiani served as a member of the Wood Dale Homeowners Association for 14 years and as a member of the Addison Township Board of Trustees for many years and was always an involved and productive member of the Wood Dale community, whereas the city of Wood Dale values the contributions of its volunteer citizens and encourage all Wood Dale residents to participate in the community to the extent possible, whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Wood Dale desire to express to Umbert Crusiani's family their gratitude for his spirit of volunteerism and dedicated service to the city, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Wood Dale, DuPage County, Illinois. Section 1, that by this resolution, the mayor and the city council of the city of Wood Dale express to Umbert Crusiani's family their gratitude for his dedication, expertise, and constructive service to the city of Wood Dale. Section 2, that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the city council of the city of Wood Dale, that a signed copy of same be suitably framed and presented to the family of Umbert Crusiani. Section 3, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval in the manner provided by law. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Kedala?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Coles? Alderman Lewatan?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you. Did you want to say anything? Who else want to give you this plaque too? Thank you. Chief?
Guys, if I can get you guys over here. And Roger, can you just ask Ryan and the dog to kind of come in here? I know the room's full and the night's going to be long, so I'm going to try to keep this as brief as possible. Today, we're kind of introducing several people to the city council and also the rest of our citizens via another through our newsletter. I'd like to start off tonight with recognizing Officer Ryan O'Neal to my left. Kind of briefly going back, Ryan O'Neal's been with, Officer O'Neal's been with our department since 2002. Prior to coming to the Wood Dale Police Department, he was a six-years with the deputy, with the sheriff's department with Henry County where he was a deputy, road deputy. Since 2002, Ryan specifically in 2004, was assigned the task of being our undercover operative with the DuPage County Metropolitan Enforcement Group, which is a branch of the Illinois State Police. In the last three and a half years, Officer O'Neal's really brought a lot of credit to not only the city of Wood Dale but the Wood Dale Police Department through his undercover narcotics investigations that were conducted throughout the county. It's safe to assume that there's no facet of narcotics or the narcotics enforcement side that Ryan O'Neal hasn't touched upon. As an undercover operative, he's done purchases of just about everything, up from not only quarter ounces, but I venture to say the kilo word. But in recognition of Ryan's efforts, we'd like to kind of welcome him back to our police department. Also, he's going to be our new Canine Officer. We've just recently acquired our Canine, but getting back to Ryan and recognition of your outstanding service and dedication to DuPage County Metropolitan Enforcement Group as a special agent and squad leader. And I might add that the last year of Ryan's tenure at the MAG office, he led a group of six other officers and once again just was developing his leadership so he can bring it back to our police department and share it with us and our citizens and make our community a better place. Your effects have made a significant impact on improving the quality of life for the residents of DuPage County and the city of Wood Dale. And once again, Ryan, the last three and a half years, some of the cases that you did that we can't really go into in detail have been significant. They've made an appreciable effect on not only the quality of life in Wood Dale but the rest of the county. And once again, we thank you and we welcome you back to the police department and making a significant contribution to our place. Thanks, Ryan. With that, I'd like to kind of turn the podium over to Officer O'Neal and he's going to introduce our next new member of the police department. Ryan?
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to take this time real briefly to speak on Uta's behalf. We just acquired her from Rudy Strechslar School for Dogs in Elkhart, Indiana. I completed a three-week training course with Uta. She is certified in six narcotics, Oxycontin, cocaine, heroin, methamphetamines, ecstasy, and marijuana. She's also trained in tracking. She'll track people, small children, if somebody gets lost of that nature. She also does apprehension work. That means if I were to release her, she will grab a suspect if we need be, if there is a crucial situation where she's needed. And also finally, she does building searches. If somebody breaks into one of our industrial parks, one of our buildings, Uta has the ability now to go in a building and locate the offender or offenders. So, she has a lot of different qualities. She's two-years-old, she came from Germany, and it's an ongoing process with me and her with the training. It's a day-to-day thing. Uta does come home with me. She's with me basically 24 hours a day. So, she's a good partner and hopefully we will do great things and have great success here in Wood Dale, eradicating crime and problems. Thank you.
Just on an added note, our dog actually became operational, I believe it was right around the 10th of December. Since then, she's done, she's performed one tracking and apprehension. This was up on Thorndale Avenue with a person that was trying to elude arrest. She's also done three significant searches which have identified drugs in buildings and have also kind of brought forward our effort in conjunction with the DuPage County Metropolitan Group. So, right now, her first five weeks on the street have been significant and once again, we look forward to what she's going to be doing in the future. I'd also like to introduce some of our other new officers. 2007 was a significant year for us to expand our police department due to retirements. And we have three new officers that I'd like to introduce to the council and also to our citizens. It's important that we be invested in each other, not only as us as a police department in our community, but our community invested in the police department. We feel that this is a significant step to starting that process in our training program. On my far-left, I'd like to introduce Ellen Piecook. Ellen's 36-years of age. He comes to us from a different line of work. He's made a significant career change in his path here. He's two children, married. He holds a bachelor's degree, and I'm going to get this right, from Northeastern University. He also holds a master's degree from Roosevelt University. He's a graduate of the College of DuPage Police Academy. And he's currently through his FTO process and he is considered an operational police officer. And once again, he was hired in 2007. Thanks, Ellen. Next is Adrian Ragula. I'm going to try to get this one right. Adrian's 23-years of age. He grew up in Wood Dale here. He's a graduate of Fenton High School. Right after his graduation from Fenton High School, he enlisted in the military. He's currently holds an infantry rating and he's a linguistics expert with the Illinois National Guard. He has a couple of months left to go in his commitment. He's married, living in Streamwood. And once again, Adrian came from our community and he's putting back in our community and we're looking for him for a lot of support with regards to his linguistic skills. Thanks, Adrian. Next, but not least, our last hire, Brian Shelton. Brian Shelton comes from Schiller Park. He's a graduate of Illinois State University, 23, 24-years of age. Prior to him coming to the Wood Dale Police Department after his graduation from Illinois State, he served as an intern with the Itasca Police Department. And we were able to snatch him away from Itasca and bring him here to Wood Dale. And once again, we're looking forward to everybody's participation here with our 2007 new hires. So, once again, this is kind of like a culmination of our process with regards to investing in one another. We wanted to make sure they know who our council is and our citizens and conversely likewise who they are. So, once again, appreciate the time to be able to introduce our new hires, our new dog, and also acknowledge Ryan's efforts with regards to his undercover operations in the last three and a half years. And we hope basically to bring back the best to Wood Dale that we can through our police agency. Thank you.
No, I just got one. Ellen was the first one, right? Adrian, well, I mean, but I don't know if I spelled them right, but that's okay.
Also on the mayor's report, I want to recognize one of our outstanding young men within the community. He was recognized at DuPage County Leadership Team. Sal Lombardi, I presume it's junior, gotta be, right? Who attends Fenton High School, hometown Wood Dale senior, who has been recognized for his community service at Lexian Brothers Medical Center, public action to deliver shelter, and for his work at Holy Ghost Community Church. Our congratulations to Sal. And one other item on mayor's report. Next week, I'll be attending the US Conference of Mayors, January 23rd through 25th as DuPage County's representative. And Alderman Wesley, the cost is being picked up by DuPage mayors and managers, so you don't have to write that check. And that concludes my report. At this time, we'll go to citizens' comment, beginning with Borjana Petrovic.
Good evening. I forgot to put down that I wanted to talk about the motorcycle shop, so I think that's probably not on this time, or it is?
Actually, that is on the agenda for approval under other business.
So, later.
You can talk at this time regarding that, that'd be fine.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Could I have the projector? The machine to be turned on? I have some pictures. Oh, there is. Chris, do you want to help me out? I want to start from the bottom. Yeah. This is regarding the proposed motorcycle shop on Irving Park Road. I'm protesting on behalf of the neighbors. I would like to show the parking violations at the subject property. Just to refresh everybody's memory, the ZBA recommended to deny the special use because of parking and the noise. There's dates on this, this one here, is that correct? December 22nd? Yeah. There should be two of them on December 22nd. You can see how they are blocking all the parking sidewalks. And there should be one more on the 22nd. This is just from the other side. The sidewalks are completely blocked. That's what I was talking about, that there's not enough parking and parkings are short. Next. And there are dates on these photos so that it's not an isolated, you know, somebody can make a mistake one day, that's fine. This one, I believe, is December 27th. There's the date. You can see the sidewalk being blocked, there's somebody walking. The next one? I believe this one is December 28th. The sidewalk is somewhere here, the snow, you can't really see it, but you can see the proportion of Irving Park and the vehicles. Next. This one is January 5th, also blocking the sidewalk. And the last one should be January 9th. And we got tired of taking pictures. That is all that I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Mirko Petrovic.
Okay, my name is Mirko Petrovic, I live at 254 North Ash Avenue. As you all know, I have filed appeal with the city of Wood Dale. And that happened January 2nd. I had been promised answer from the city lawyer, which I did receive. Okay, it's kind of hard to see, but I have received this answer today around 4:00. I didn't have much time to prepare myself. However, I did have time to read this memo, understanding that I was denied appeal on a few things. Okay. Under section 10-801, which is saying, "An appeal from any decision or ruling of the zoning administrator and of the building administrator made and interpreting, applying, and/or enforcing the regulation contained in this chapter may be taken to the zoning board of appeal by any person aggravated by said decision or ruling or by any other officer, department, board, or commission of the city." This is exactly what I did. The lawyer answer is, "In review of this, it is our legal opinion that a decision made by the city staff as to the appropriances of allowing petitioner to apply for a special use in a B2 zoning district and to forward this merit to the zoning board of appeal is not the type of decision or interpretation open to appeal per person to the section 10-801." There's a contradicting statement here. I'm appealing the Mr. Ross Clicker. He is, I believe, a community development assistant. He is officer of the city. In the section 10-10, "User is not specifically permitted in a district." Okay, this is very important. It says that when a user is not specifically designated as a permitted user within any given zoning district, such use is expressly prohibited. However, when a proposed use is similar to use designated as a permitted use within any such a zoning district, an applicant may seek a special use permit pursuant to Article 11 of this chapter and event the zoning board of appeal of the city council make finding of fact based upon the evidence presented that the proposed use has not met the standard set forth in this chapter for special users and that the proposed use is similar to other uses classified as permitted user in such a district. A special use permit for such a proposal use may be granted by the ordinances. Okay. Accordingly, the staff review the permitted uses in the B2 zoning district and determine that motorcycle sales and service are similar to bicycle sales and service. I'm disputing the fact that the motorcycle is similar to the bicycle. In addition to this, the applicant is during the proceeding and all his meetings, he wanted to repair the snowmobiles. That was add-on as to way the meetings are progressing. ATVs. Then later on, the snowblowers. Then later on, the lawn mowers. Now I'm questioning, are these uses similar to the bicycle? What are they similar to? I got one more picture to present. Chris, can you? Okay, what? What we have here is, maybe some of you can see it, I don't know how good to picture it, but what we have here is a building next door to the proposed motorcycle repair shop which is down in this corner. What we have up there is a people living and there are bicycles up there. Around the corner is two windows. The apartments up there, their windows are right on top of the proposed motorcycle repair shop, which is zero clearance from the proposed exhaust or so on that is going to take place. I understand that he was going to build some exhaust or something. That exhaust got to go somewhere. They are too close. On the other side, about 35 feet, there's windows of apartment building that'll, people live in there. On the north side, there is my window where I live. My window is 60 feet from the place from proposed motorcycle shop. Once again, I'm appealing that decision for motorcycle shop not be permitted in B2. I am definitely going to do everything as possible and to exercise all my right and all, any other appeals I may have in the future and any other option that is available to me to pursue this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Jones Wilk.
Good evening. I wanted to make a comment tonight about the article that appeared in the Daily Herald about the executive search firm for the city manager position and that there are several city council members that were in favor of not hiring an executive search firm and rather promoting the assistant city manager. As a resident of Wood Dale with a master's degree in public administration and both professional and volunteer work experience in local government, I was disappointed to read that about Wood Dale. Nothing against Jeff, but it's a professional field. It's a highly competitive one and particularly with city management. Locally, Northern Illinois University is one of the most respected public administration programs in the country, resulting in a natural pool of candidates with many years of experience in our county. You as city council members and leaders in our community have a responsibility to the citizens of Wood Dale to hire the most highly qualified person for the position of city manager. You need to hire a professional search firm to see who else is out there. And in the end, if Jeff is the most qualified candidate for the position, then you will have the confidence of knowing that you've done the best thing for the citizens of Wood Dale. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dave Tolemy. Alderman Tolemy? Always, always the honor of the position.
Good evening. I'm actually here to talk the reverse side, okay, about hiring the PAR group. I don't, you know, it's irrelevant whether, you know, the city council determines whether or not you want to promote Jeff into that position or not. But realize that you have spent the last three years plus grooming him for that position. What I'm here to talk about is why, when the economy is as bad as it is, why you would even consider spending $21,000, okay, to hire a group, you know, like the PAR group. I mean, those of you that are on the council know that in the past, we have used the PAR group for other studies and we've gotten bad information from them, okay? And to sit there and say, oh, no, that's not true, you know, think about it, okay? All I'm here to say is that from my perspective and as a resident of this community, I think it would be a sham and a waste of money to spend $21,000, this community's money, on hiring a search firm at this time. Right now, there are a lot of people that are looking for positions. Recent event, there was a city that was looking for an assistant city manager. They had over 70 applicants. 70 applicants that were all qualified to do the job. Didn't cost them a dime to get those applicants in the door. And all I'm saying to you is that before you make that final decision, think about it because when you hear the news- it, because when you hear the news, like you heard today, about the stock market again going down over 300-plus points this week alone, almost 1,000 points it's lost, that's got to tell you something about what, where this economy is headed. And if, and if you're not going to deal with those types of issues, then I think you all need to wake up, because that's what it's all about. It's how can you save the taxpayers money in this time, okay, when the money is really tight, when there is no money, period, for anything? Yeah, I know you're going to be coming into your budget season soon, and you're going to be looking at your revenues. And I'm, I'm going to tell you right now, when you start looking especially like at your, your billing and permit fees, you better not count too much too heavily on them this year. Okay? Unless you know something about the economy that I don't know. Okay? And I've been in banking and finance over 35 years, so I, I think I know what I'm talking about when I talk about finance. Then, I, just on another note, I was sitting here and I'm listening to these people that just were up here talking about this motorcycle shop, and I'm not going to say I'm for it or against it, but one thing that did bother me was staffs looking at it and saying that a motorcycle sale, sales and service is the same as a bicycle sales and service. If that's true, then I would have to ask, why do we have special laws for riding a motorcycle down the street versus special laws riding a bicycle down the street? They're two different things, folks. Two different things. And I will be back, I'm, I'm going to be coming back more to these meetings now, and I will be voicing my opinion on a lot more things as a resident. You can count on it.
Thank you, Dave. Does anyone else wish to address the city council this evening? Alderman Sy.
I'm sorry, I was a little bit late getting here. I was at another meeting. As, as a member of the zoning board, we're, the zoning board is getting mixed signals from this council up here. First, we, we spent very many months working on the B4 zoning district, and that, the purpose of that, to clean up or improve the appearance of Irving, Irving Park corridor. Tonight, you're voting on a motorcycle shop. I have nothing against a motorcycle shop. My, my nephew is probably one of the biggest Harley dealers in the state of Illinois, but for, for this business to be on Irving Park, right next to a residential area, I, I think there, it's wrong in effect that on our, at the zoning meeting, we turned it down. You guys reversed it. It seems like every decision the zoning board makes to clear, to improve the appearance of Irving Park, you people go the opposite. And I think one of the reasons why is that you have, some of the members of this board have the philosophy, well, we've got so many empty buildings on Wooddale or on Irving Park, let's fill them up. Well, if you want to fill them up, let's change the code. Let's get the, let's, let's get the tattoo parlors and let's get the gentleman clubs. Let's, you know, you know, something like this, if you're just trying to fill up the buildings, you know, I know it's a little facetious, but, you know, what, what do you people want, want to do here? We're trying, we're trying to improve the appearance of our gateway of our city, and you're letting this in. You're going to put a automobile repair shop right next to, to one of the restaurants. Now, there's, we have plenty of empty buildings in the industrial area, we have plenty of buildings in, that's, that's not but up to a residential area, and I know what the noise and the pollution factor is from the motorcycle shop, and you people never took in consideration, where is this man with the motorcycle shop going to be testing these motorcycles? Is he going to go up and down the side streets? It's a noise. We, you know, a lot of these people over there have young children, they'll be taking their naps in the afternoon, and, you know, I, I don't know where you're really coming from. It's just a, you know, it's kind of mind-boggling, and the fact that, you know, my members of the, of the board, they'll say, what is this, what does the city council want? It's, it's like the wind. Every day, you change. So, we're, we're going to do the best we can, we go by the rules and regulations, but boy, this is a travesty to let this motorcycle shop be right in the, in the heart of our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Does anyone else? Yes. Let me go to Mr. Boyen first, and I'll get to you.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Boyen. I'm speaking on behalf of Eagles Claus Cycles. Most of the questions that are being brought up, we've already talked about, ad nauseam. We've, the city council has proposed changes in the ordinance that we are more than happy to abide with to address some of these issues. I also take issue with the fact that everybody seems to believe that a motorcycle shop is bad for a neighborhood, that it's ugly, that it causes dirt and pollution, and I, quite frankly, since there is no motorcycle shop in this town, I don't understand where these assumptions come from. We are not in the 1950s motorcycle gangs kind of an environment. Motorcycles are a big business. The man whose son or whatever owns a motorcycle shop, you should know that better than anyone. Motorcycles that we service, that we ride, that we work on, start at $20,000. We have more money in motorcycles than most people have in their cars. These are not dirty, filthy, stinky shops that bring in gangs and trouble and violence. You can take pictures of, of cars parked on the sidewalk. Yes, that is a problem we have, and we've discussed that issue, we've addressed that issue. We've become aware of the problem, those changes have been made. We've had the police at the building, we've talked with the police. We have parking in the back, as soon as the weather changes, that allows us to create better parking. I'm sure there are other businesses in this city that you could take pictures of cars parked on the sidewalk if you had nothing else to do but walk around the city taking pictures. I don't know what the, what the plan of the city council is, I don't know what the finding of the attorney is, I haven't looked into any of that. I just want to make it known that, that I take offense that people are making assumptions about what a motorcycle shop is when there aren't any motorcycle shops in this town, and you have nothing to compare it to. Thank you.
Mr. Koopish.
Good evening. I'm Lance Koopish. I'm an attorney. I represent the adjacent landowner Wooddale Discount Wickers regarding the motorcycle shop issue. I am, I take, almost the exception with everything that the gentleman just said. Motorcycles are noisy, they're dirty, and on top of that, the biggest problem is that there's no parking, none whatsoever. That property cannot meet minimum parking requirements for any community in the entire Chicagoland area. The good citizens that came in that own a house, that, whose window is 60 feet away from potential carbon monoxide expeller surely have things to be concerned about. There is an industrial section, as someone pointed out, where it would be much more appropriate for this type of activity to take place. He said that, well, if you had nothing to do, you could run around and take pictures of cars on the sidewalk all over the municipality. I, I lived in Wooddale for a number of years, and I didn't find that to be the case for any business in the city. And you gentlemen in the city council know better than that. That parking is atrocious. There's no way you can park those vehicles or have enough parking without danger to the people that are on Irving Park Road. If you notice, those park, those cars will pull directly in, which means there's no turning radius, and they have to back up on the Irving Park Road to get out. Can you imagine backing up on the Irving Park Road, the four-lane highway, at 4:00 in the afternoon or 5:00 in the afternoon? Then the gentleman states, well, listen, when the weather changes, we could park in back. I don't know about you, but I'll tell you, when I go somewhere, I don't generally pull down an alley and park in back, and I don't think anyone on the city council does either. You're going to take the most convenient parking you can find, which is the properties north and south adjacent, I'm sorry, east and west adjacent to this property. You're not going to pull around and find some, some access alley and hopefully park in the back. And, of course, that's only subject to good weather. So, does that mean that the other four months of the year that we have inclement weather, which is continuous here, that there's going to be these parking issues? Certainly, no one is opposed to a business enterprise making money and, and engaging in business. However, any type of, of use on that property where the parking is insufficient as it is, has to be looked at carefully by the city council. And I, I've been before the city council before, and, and my experience has been that you're concerned about stacking for, for car washes and...